No.
I was looking at the agenda. I was.
Oh, okay.
At the wrong agenda in there. Okay. So that said. So I make a motion that we approve the meet the meeting minutes for September fourteenth twenty twenty. As presented. Anyone?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
All right.
Hi. I think that's unanimous, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so. We have an odd any. There's no citizens to have an audience of, but if there were, is there anyone who'd like to speak up? No, that said, we're going to continue the public hearing on the zoning. Regulation revisions for sections eight, five, six, sixty-one and sixty-five. So we had made some. Request to Paula to put some, take some of our input and put them into the final finish. Now Paula, did you send out the clean version or the?
I did. I sent it out on. I think it was on Thursday as a separate email.
That's that's probably them calling for a campaign contribution again. On the house phone.
My my phone just rang a moment ago, too.
Yeah, that's gotta be it then. Because because I don't need an extended warranty on the car.
Especially the car you don't have anymore.
Yeah, the Paula, you sent those proposed revisions to the regulations out. On last Thursday?
On on Thursday, yes, yes. And the the subject is home occupation revisions, and this is a clean, clean copy.
Right.
So let's tear through them as quickly as what is everybody's pleasure on this? Do you want to go through it and you just discuss where your? You have some items to bring up, or do you want to tear back through the whole three pages? Either way is fine.
Who are you talking to, Rick?
Everybody. Just saying, does that?
Oh, everybody. Okay. I thought you were talking to Paula. Okay.
No, I was talking to the commission, just saying, what's your preference here?
Okay.
Paul, I had a conversation with Paula earlier in the day about this, and she, we went through a lot of detail, but I think she could probably tear through it more quickly. There were some things that she made some suggestions in the in the document that I don't think is in line with probably what we want to eventually pass, but I'll bring those up. So Paula, do you want to go through maybe maybe highlight what's mostly the same as before? And then what's different?
I was, I was, Rick, I would highlight the changes, not not what was there before.
Well, the difficulty is with a clean document, it's next to impossible for me to to be able to highlight all the changes. Because it's clean. So this would be as it would be in the regulations.
Yeah, let me go through the document and gloss. I'm gonna pass by most of the the content here because it's in print. And you can see it, and if you need a little time to absorb it as we go through this. So there's section eight, five, one, which is. Going to be standards for any home occupation whatsoever. And then there's modifications under three classifications, minor. Which is at the bottom of the page of page one of the clean copy, moderate, act home occupation and major. And there was still some discussion amongst the commission at our last meeting whether we wanted two or three categories, and I don't want to gloss over that area, but it seemed. Most logical to break it down into three because there's three levels of approval potentially. Staff approval. Site plan approval, special permit approval. So we have come in, get a permit, go about doing your business. We we might hear about it occasionally, only probably hear about exceptions. I'm good with that. The more we can have staff approve things and make it quick, easy and cheap to get permission to move forward with a home business, great. Then there's minor home occupation. Then there's on moderate. That's basically, we don't have to hold a public hearing. We just want to look at the site plan and make sure we're okay with. The essence of it and slightly expanded capabilities from minor. And then there's major stuff, which is major for a home occupation, but not major as business goes, where we allow more vehicles, we allow. We we basically put a limit on the number of trips because we're having an expanded. Business concept operated out of a home, having some level of control over it that we have subjective input on would be the the third level. And so if if you want, I can go back through what my perspective was on the different sections. And where in the clean copy I did mention a few things to Paula that I don't think are in line with what we might eventually want to settle in on. So there's a general requirements, you know, clearly, it's got to be, I'm gonna just summarize these verbally. I'm not going to read word for word. Clearly, a home occup- occupation is secondary to it being a home. That's item A. So the individual conducting a home business has to both own it and reside in the home business. So somebody.
Specifically that rentals are not allowed. You can't. You can't have a business from rental.
Correct.
Okay.
You know, that's something that we didn't really have a lot of discussion about, but the other thing, too, is you can't go buy a house and operate a business out of it unless you're living there. If you want to buy a building just to operate a business out of it, you can't do that because it's.
Okay. Yeah.
So. Number three, that the home occupation shall be conducted wholly within the dwelling or a permitted permitted accessory building. So I go back, I'm gonna use some examples from way back as a kind of things that may be problematic, and I don't mean to say that this is the the full range of what we would want to. Keep in our minds, but we had somebody who was carving wooden statues with chainsaws out in the backyard. And chainsaws were going nonstop, day in, day out, and then they were treating them with chemicals outside, and the neighbors complained. So. We had to limit that. It was pretty offensive for the neighbors, you know, I. I I I'm trying to think of things that we would want to permit outside, and maybe there there should be a modification later, but we haven't really brought that up until this point. I'm gonna keep going through these. Stop me when somebody wants to. There shall be no, the general standard is there shall be no visible evidence or indication of the home occupation is seen from outside. Except for signs is permitted in a different section. This, there has to be enough parking to support the the use, and then we have way into parking in all the other three sections.
So getting back to that for a minute, Rick, no visible evidence of or of home occupation, that means there's no outdoor activity.
No outdoor activity. So if you want to carve with a chainsaw, you can't do it outside.
Right, right. Or you can't run a landscape business because you're growing plants outside.
Or you couldn't have horse therapy. Because that's the hor- by definition.
Horse sales would be prohibited.
Yeah.
You know.
Okay.
And and certain other things are going to be permitted because you're agricultural, and we don't weigh in on those things. I mean, we give really wide berth to agricultural uses. So that may be the caveat that is fine with us that. Are the kinds of uses that we don't feel we have to weigh in on. Item F under eight, five, one, screening. Can it 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 deals with screening to ensure that it's effective and in place for the life of the the home in essence. I don't know if that's the way that 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 paragraph reads, but basically, if we propose screening from adjacent homes, it's got to be kept in place. And then.
Where are you? I thought you were at F.
Yes.
Yeah, this is on the clean copy of the proposed regulation changes. It's.
Eight, eight point five point one F.
Yeah, eight point five point one. That's on the first of the three-page document.
It doesn't say anything on mine. It doesn't say anything on mine about screening.
Yeah, mine neither. That was my point.
Well, the what? That was what we what we looked at on nine fourteen is what you're looking at right now. If you go to the email I sent on on last Thursday.
That's what I've got.
The one that the heading is, not that Flo sent that I sent, proposed revisions to zoning regulations on home occupations based on the nine fourteen discussions. And then there's the word clean and a yellow.
Hold on. Let me clarify this. So there were two two documents sent out, I believe, both on the same day. One is part of the package and a separate document sent out separately by Paula, just as a single attachment from her. And that one is has in the title of the document, it says section eight, five, clean draft with additional.
I've got it. I've got it now. Okay, I've got it now. Yep.
And the other one says proposed provisions.
Correct. This this one says proposed revisions, but there's a red thing at the top that says based on nine fourteen.
Yeah, it's the key is based on nine fourteen discussion.
Gotcha. Okay, okay. So F does talk about screening, and then there's an additional G after that.
Yes, and there's a G. The screening and G covers objectionable noise, odors, smoke, dust, lighting, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. There shall be no discharge of hazardous or toxic substance to the air, surface water, groundwater or ground. All I think.
G was in our current regulations, and that was in the the original proposed regulations. It may not have been called G, but it was in there.
So I'm gonna keep pushing through this, but if you want to go back to something, if you're thinking about it as I move on to the next item, we'll go right back to it. Just just say something. So the first level of of approval, which is by staff, meaning the zoning enforcement agent would look at our regs and make sure that she felt that the proposed. Minor home occupation was in compliance with the regulations, further modifies some of the provisions. So we came up with two commercial vehicles not to exceed eleven thousand pounds each gross vehicle weight. And it has to be registered to that address. So can't be. Somebody. You know, as Paula put it, and I I agree with her, let's keep the tax. Sufficient parking not to exceed four parking spaces total. So we've got a couple of commercial vehicles, a couple of employee vehicles. Passenger cars, whatever they might be. So. No portion shall be occupied outside the principal or permitted accessory structures. No more than two persons may be employed in the home occupation who do not do not reside on the premises. So you have a family business with four family members that live there and two more employees. That's that's fine. That's by permit. Here's where I took. Something I want to bring up to you. Item E, total floor area for home occupations on the lot would not exceed. And then we put Paula put in seven hundred and fifty feet or forty-nine percent of the total living area. I I expressed at the last meeting, I was hoping not to address how many square feet within the home they were going to use. Just the the second part of this saying forty-nine percent is basically saying. The home business has to be accessory accessory to living there. So I think the forty-nine percent threshold, I think, makes a lot of sense. And how the zoning enforcement agent would enforce it, we'll leave it up to her, but maybe requiring some sort of statement of use by the. By the potential home business. Applicant and just have them make a statement. If it were to get out of hand, at least we have a document on record that says.
There there may be, there may be an instance where the building official is involved in this because of separation of this business from office, office from home. There's different requirements in the building code for office use versus home use. So there may be, in fact, be a building permit that's issued for something like this.
And also fire marshal. If there's if there's outside people coming in, the fire marshal may.
Yeah, especially if there's outside people coming in. Exactly. If you're doing it by yourself in your home, that's one thing, but once you, once you bring the general public in as a business. That falls under a different category from the building code standpoint.
Right. That's outside of these regulations and that staff.
Right, exactly, exactly.
How we enforce, do we really care and how do we enforce it? I guess that's. We that was my thought when I read this thing, and besides which like, see if. Does does basement space count as as part of your living space? And what what happens if they if they have the whole basement plus plus some in the, you know, in the living space type of thing?
Well, again, that that gets into the that gets into the building code, because if you're in the basement, you're talking about means of egress. There's all kinds of things that are addressed in the building code that may prohibit you from using your basement for commercial use.
The definition that we have in our zoning regulations, say, living area, comma, total. The portion of a building which is constructed with finished ceilings, walls and floors, in computing the floor area for living quarters, rooms for heating equipment, garage, outside vestibules. And open or closed porches shall not be included. Measurements shall be taken from outside walls.
Right.
And I think it is good. I mean, I think it, I think you need to to have. And it's, um, the the seven hundred and fifty. Square feet is what is in our current existing regulations, but I, and it's fine to drop that off, but I I think you should make it clear that they have to be. Secondary to the to the home to the home. So forty-nine percent of the total living area, I think, probably should be.
Bob, I think at the last meeting, you might have said this. Tell me, correct me if I'm wrong. Really, from a zoning standpoint, what we care about is what's going on outside more than inside.
Yeah.
You know, and it's, we care about the impact on the neighbors, and that's the, I mean, I think the regulation with forty-nine percent in it. In essence, addresses that, at least from our perspective, because we're saying. You got the the two vehicles outside, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to go on public record endorsing somebody. Having a whole two thousand square foot basement plus a thou- you know, nine hundred square feet upstairs, having a three thousand square foot business in their house. But I think the regulation, as it's crafted without the seven fifty square feet and with the forty-nine percent, I think it meets. The goal of basically, we don't want to impact the neighbor. That's my whole take on this. We don't want to negatively impact the neighborhood or impacting a budding neighbor. That's my, I'm gonna keep going through this. If you want to talk more.
Terms of, let me just jump in. In terms of enforcement. Our zoning enforcement officer, no matter who it is, is not going to be seeking problems. It comes when there's an issue that cannot be resolved, a neighbor complaint that cannot be resolved, then you have. Some bullet points to say, well, you need to reduce the size because it's, you know, forty percent, it exceeds forty-nine percent of your total living area. So it gives the zoning officer something to to work with when there is a a problem, but nobody's going to be going out and measuring.
But I think. But I think for a minor home occup- occup- occupation, I think seven hundred and fifty square feet as a max is sufficient. You're only talking about two employees and possibly two others. So seven hundred and fifty square feet is certainly a good maximum square footage for an office space.
So is there a desire to keep the seven fifty in the in the document? Because I had suggested to Paula, we would probably want to drop it.
You want to? I would say, I would say seven fifty, Rick.
How does everybody?
Because this is minor. When you get into moderate or major, then that's something else. But I think for minor, if you're talking about two, no more than two people employed, seven fifty is certainly enough space.
Okay.
This could have customers, too. The white's drafted now.
It was seven hundred and fifty square feet is certainly enough for for four or five people.
Yeah, okay.
We leave it in everyone? That's a consensus?
Yeah, I'm good with the seven fifty.
Let's go on to item F. Just read minor home occupations included or not limited to. So there's a fairly broad ability for the the zoning enforcement agent to interpret this. And there's a list of items that are permitted but not limited to, and the offices of plumbers, house painters, electricians, and other persons whose services are not performed at the dwelling.
So also business, professional and personal services. So an accountant, an attorney, massage therapist would be able to have offices.
There's a list of specific things plus then a broad range of others with the idea that. For the the other services, like mostly trades, it's for work that's not going to be done on the premises. They, it's their basis of operation. Next up, moderate. Is everyone good on this section?
Yeah.
Okay, moderate impact home occupation. The commission may approve a site plan for, not shall, but may, which is a key word in there. In addition to the requirements, there can now also be a fourteen thousand square foot gross vehicle weight. So one more vehicle that's a little bigger, like a walk-in van. Commercial vehicles shall be garage on the premises or screened so as not to be visible when standing at ground level from the boundary of any adjacent property. Including those properties separated by public or private rights of way. So this is kind of getting a little tough about.
I'm just wondering if that also be for the minor. Because I know you guys were talking about the the vans that turn into billboards.
I don't mind, I don't mind a a commercial pickup truck with a sign on the side in a residential neighborhood. To me, that doesn't bother me. Once you started getting into bigger vehicles with billboards on them, that's, I think, was the level of concern. Correct me if I'm wrong. You know, I'm going from memory, and boy, I can forget a lot lately.
I have vacation brain, so.
Okay. In this, under item B, Paula had proposed a limitation on total square footage of one thousand square feet or forty-nine percent of the total living area. So this does not expand the number of employees, but it does expand the vehicle. So what we're saying is if you're going to do something more outside with a bigger vehicle, we want site plan approval. And that's really the big. So. That's that's really the big difference is screening the big vehicle from neighbors.
If you're going, if you're going to increase the square footage allowed for office space, then you probably should increase the number of employees allowed. I didn't, I didn't be under that moderate category, increases square footage, but it doesn't necessarily, it doesn't increase the number of employees.
So why don't we?
Those go hand in hand, square footage and the number of employees.
I still think two employees and having three vehicles, you know, you probably have a principal that lives at the residence. You might have some other employees that come in and go out in other service vehicles that are garage there. I I I'd kind of like to keep the scope of it. Within a certain realm. And I, that's my.
It's fine, Rick, but then then don't, then don't increase the square footage.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
What's the point of increasing square footage if you increase the number of people?
So keep that at seven fifty and still forty-nine percent. So basically, the moderate act home occupation, the only real difference is one bigger vehicle and site plan approval. Done.
And and the outdoor and the outdoor store and the outdoor storage area, outdoor storage area.
That, oh, and the outdoor storage area, I'm sorry. I forgot.
It's good to have PCC oversight on that. Now, one of the things that looks like got lost in translation on my part is. We need to reiterate that no more than two persons. So I I need to insert D that's under minor needs to to be duplicated over here. The same language, the no more than two persons may be employed in the home occupation who do not reside on the premises.
And it already states that in the beginning, Paula, where it says, in addition to the requirements and standards of section eight point five point one.
One, one is is the overall.
Very beginning.
Which is not, which is not number of employees.
I think you should put in the number of employees.
Yeah, I think I will. I I will put that in.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
So really.
Somebody's going to come along and say, well, you didn't have anything in there.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. And I think at some, at one point, I I think. I mean, I I write this not in a vacuum. I get pulled away to the counter and phone calls and stuff, and I sometimes I miss things. And I know at one point I was thinking about having a lot, a line in here that said, you know, in addition to what you can do on the minor, you can also do this. And then I changed the scope, the phraseality, and left off the two employees. That needs, that needs to get reinserted.
Bob, I, Bob, I know, I know you're saying that the eight five one covers it, but you know how people are.
That's good. I think it's a good suggestion.
Yeah.
You know, so basically, site plan approval is because there's going to be something going on outside, and we want to make sure that it's properly enacted as part of the approval. And it's, hey, Paula, give me a perspective. What would the fee be for a home occupation under minor?
It's twenty-five dollars, and then the state gets another sixty, so it's eighty-five.
Okay, and what would the? The the moderate impact one, same fee?
It's about, no, because we. The site plan fee is two hundred and something, I think it is, low two hundreds, two thirty-five, maybe. We have to publish a notice in the Chronicle about the decision. So it covers fees. It covers the town fees. It doesn't cover our staff time.
I wish we could get rid of that fee somehow. I wish we didn't have to publish in the Chronicle. Is that?
We currently aren't, and what I've been doing because of the the COVID, and when we've had somebody come in, which we've not had that many applicants, but. When we don't need to publish anything, because we can publish it online on the town website, like Walters, the the farmer's market. I told him he did not have to pay the additional hundred and sixty dollars for, or the fee that would be going to the Chronicle, because we're kind of posted in the Chronicle.
So.
I wish we could go away, too.
I thought they were trying to get legislation through to get rid of that.
They've been talking about it every year, and the newspaper lobby is stronger.
That's what I thought. Okay.
So is there any way we could say a site plan approval doesn't need publication by changing our regulations?
No, I think that's state statute.
It's statute. It's state statute.
It's what it statute, what it, well, actually, you're only, you're only posting the decision. The decision is, if the decision is not posted, then the appeals process never ends. So somebody could appeal a decision five years from now. Five years later, could appeal a decision.
But that's all by Connecticut general statute.
Yes, but if you post it in the in the Chronicle. There's fifteen, there's a fifteen-day appeal period, and if nobody has said anything and filed an appeal within those fifteen days, then then it's done. Then they can't appeal later. I I don't know what what is going to come out, come out of. The post-COVID regulations. I I tend to think that people are are enjoying some of the. The benefit of of posting certain things on the website. Because not that many people subscribe to a newspaper anymore. So it's, you know, people, you want people to hear it.
Or they do it electronically, not hard copy.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, so let's let's keep at, keep at, let's go at major. Major impact. So special permit, four hundred and sixty dollar cost, because we have to publish notice, we have to hold a. Public, public hearing. And we have to publish note of the hearing. We have to publish this, the decision, and almost all of that fee goes to publicizing the.
And you have to publish, not during COVID, but normally, you you have to publish in the newspaper twice about the upcoming public hearing. And then once after the, you have to publish the decision. Says three times.
So let's get into the differences here. So the same as the prior two plus. There we, what's in here is a setback from a budding properties. You need five acres to do it.
Yeah.
Home occupation separated from all a budding property lines by a hundred feet. And then we can require screen screening at our discretion to shield commercial vehicles. And we also put in here, was this the one we were going twenty trips per day potentially?
Yes, that's that's under A. Yeah.
I I had a question about A, A, I. The the and or. The. To me, I thought it should say that that the. Estimated vehicles that will enter and exit and or exit on a daily basis will not exceed a total of twenty vehicles per day unless. The driveway is separated from a budding properties by at least fifty feet.
Well, I. Yeah, Larry.
The and the and or and not confuse me.
Okay.
Or maybe I just get confused easily.
Many of the five acre parcels that this would be on. Many of the five acre parcels that this would be on only have a 50-foot access strip coming up from the road. So it would preclude a lot of rear lots where we might ideally like to see a home business like this being, you, being located where it's, it does have enough room for setback. Not always, but quite frequently.
I think what you're talking about, Rick, are really flag lots, the rear lots.
Yes.
Or known as flag lots a lot of times.
Yes.
So I, I understand that, but one of the things that, looking at these three different categories, I think it would be helpful if they were, if they were presented in, in a way where it's parallel construction of each section. So that it's easy to see what the changes are going from one to the next to the next. For example, in major impact, there's nothing that says, there's nothing that limits the number of employees.
Correct.
Should there be that, should there be that? There's nothing in there that limits the size of the home occupancy. Like we've had in the other two categories.
We did not.
So I think.
The commission did not discuss this, the, this, the commission did not discuss the major impact at all two weeks ago. So I took what we had before and modified it. So this is, the commission has not talked about it. And I don't know that, you know, ahead of time, what the, what type of businesses you would allow under this. So that, the second line in here says, with activity in excess of a modern impact home occupation in accordance with the site plan rules. So I don't know.
Yeah, but in, in excess of how much? Do, do we, do we want to limit the number of employees? Do we want to limit the size of, of the major impact home occupation? That's not addressed in any, in, in this.
Correct.
It was addressed in the previous two, but not in this one. So what I'm talking about is trying to create three categories that have similar construction or similar requirements that get, you know, you go to the next category, the requirement goes up a little bit. You go to the next category, the requirement goes up a little bit more. So it's easy to follow case by case by case and compare one to the other so that the applicant can figure out which one he's going to be in, which category he's going to be in. I mean, this, this could be done on a table, for example. You know, some kind of, you know, spreadsheet or something like that. But right now, it's not done in, in, in a parallel type of construction. Similar construction from one category to the next to the next.
No, it, no, it is not. It's like, the major is, it's more than the moderate. And I.
Yeah, but how much more? It doesn't say, it doesn't say how much more.
It's a special permit, so it's, the commission has full reign to, to rein it in. So it's, I, I, and this is, it's, this was the language that's been in here for a long time with a couple minor exceptions in here. And it, I thought the commission would want the opportunity to hear a proposal for a particular piece of property. I'm fine, I mean, it, it's, I have no problem with, with limiting it. I'm just, I thought you would wanted some latitude.
Do we, do we get in trouble?
Usually, usually, go ahead, Tom.
Do we get in trouble by having your discretion on each one that comes before us, rather than saying, for example, no more than six employees or something?
Only to the extent that we're inconsistent in the way we interpret the regulation.
That, that, that's my, that's my point. If we say, you can, you know, limited to six employees, that's pretty much written in stone. If we don't put anything in, one guy, one party comes in, they want six people, one party comes in, they want 10 people. You know, how, I just feel we can get ourselves in trouble that way.
So let me, let me throw this out as a concept. Let's try and examine this, this issue. Limit of what we want to allow as a home occupation. That's what, that's what would be in this category. We should express the limits of what we want. Do we want, do we want no more than 1,000 square feet? Do we want no more than six employees? Do, are 20 trips per day too much? Operating a retail store in essence out of a, a home. Is that acceptable, or do we want that in a commercial zone? Even if it's a home business, you know, home occupation, I, I, from my perspective, is to enable people to work out of their home where the home's appropriate for it.
But I, I thought, I thought the 20 vehicles per day was excessive. And I think.
Way too many.
Yeah, and I, I don't think it should be more than 10 vehicles a day, number one. And I think we should limit employees to, God, even if six is a lot to me, because to me, it's getting into be a, a commercial enterprise.
Yeah, I mean, if you have six or, six or eight employees, you're, you're a commercial enterprise, go rent an office.
That's what I'm thinking. I'm thinking, I'm thinking 10 vehicles per day and no more than four employees. I mean, we're talking residential, we're not talking commercial area.
And as a, as a special permit, you have, the, the criteria is very vague, that's in section 52. You need to think about the relation of the buildings and uses to the surrounding area. The access, what the access is in and out. Is it suitable location for that type of use? Is the traffic and pedestrian access and circulation? Would that be in a safe manner? I mean, there's all sorts of things that you can look at and think about because it is a special permit. We can also.
The way, the way, in my mind, the way to look at it would be, you've got the, the minor use and you establish that criteria. Then you get the minor use plus something else would then equal the moderate criteria. Then you have the moderate use plus something else would be the major.
Yeah, that's fine, that's.
So it becomes sequential. You're adding one to another. And each one of the requirements from the previous one, each one of the requirements from the previous category carries over to the next category, but then you're adding a few things.
Right.
You know what I mean? So, so minor plus one would equal moderate. Moderate plus one would equal major, that type of thing. So it's easy to see which category you're going to fall into, and it's easy for us to control it. So it's, it's done in, in the same manner. How many, how many vehicles, what size of the vehicles, how many trips, how many employees, how many square feet in each of the three categories?
Well, in the other two categories, we don't talk at all about trips in and out.
No, we don't.
It's just how many vehicles, how much parking do you need?
But I think you should, I mean, it, it, they all should relate to each other so that you know which one you fall into.
You know, Bob.
I'm not arguing that, yeah.
Bob, I think the reason we shied away from number of trips on these, the first two levels is it's almost unenforceable. You're going to sit there and count cars going in and out? They could, they, whatever.
How, how are you going to enforce the last one then? How are you going to enforce the major one?
If you have no number, you can't enforce it, but don't put anything.
Well, the idea here is that if there are complaints based on the traffic, because we're, we're going to allow much larger vehicles and probably more of them on a, for the, the major. That's where we felt addressing the number of trips. I just, maybe we don't address the number of trips at all, but I, I, you know, I'm, I'm trying to keep it easy to, to run a small business and get a permit to run a small business out of your home in the first two levels without getting overwhelmed with all of the detail. And I don't know that, because we don't put it in the first two levels, that we, we should be precluded from putting it in the last level, meaning number of trips in this case.
Rick, I'm thinking about the house that Judy and I live in. We have about a 300-foot driveway, and the gentleman to our left has a 300-foot driveway. If he had a business in, in his home and he had 20, you know, people coming in every day. I mean, it would be a zoo parade, it would just, and, and he certainly could. You know, it's one thing if you're in a, in a neighborhood where the driveway is a 50 feet, you know, long or even 100 feet, but you get a 300-foot driveway where you can have parking for six or eight vehicles at the same time, which we do, we have probably six parking spots. If we had a business in here, we could have, and we could have all these trips. Or vice versa, if the people next door to us had the people coming in and out, it would be really affecting our lifestyle.
Okay.
I just think that, in my opinion, is we should limit it to 10 trips. Certainly no more than four employees. You know, otherwise, we're getting into a commercial, you know, occupation. I, you know, I just.
Yeah.
I mean, it's one thing to have an accounting office in the house and a small business in the house. When you start talking about larger vehicles and 20 trips and, you know, no limitation on employees, you've got a commercial enterprise. As far as I'm concerned.
Then, you know, I think, Rich, you might have brought this up at one of the first stages of the conversation. Maybe we only need two categories and we can put the 10, 10 trips a day and put it under a moderate and eliminate special permits for home business altogether.
What do you think?
Sorry, guys, I was missing from you for a while. For some reason, I had no speaker. And then Zoom did an update, so I missed a big chunk of your meeting there. Yeah, I do like simple two categories. I'm wondering if you can also, you know, control the type of business. Because if you're going to start having 10, 15 employees, a house doesn't quite do that, and they're probably going to be building a building. And at that point, you might be, the footprint that they're going to take out there and the amount of parking spots they're going to need for that, it's going to be a whole different ballgame.
I think so.
You know? Do we, do we even need a, a major impact? And, and if we're going to eliminate that, do we eliminate the public hearing option? And just say, look, you can do home businesses, here are the two areas you're doing it, otherwise.
Well, you know what?
District.
While I was sitting here waiting for my updates to get done, I was reading in the National Planners Association, talks a lot about, there's a difference between home occupation and home business. They're two kind of distinct categories that really break this down differently. Home occupations are things that a seamstress would do or a lawyer may do, things like that. They're more office related stuff.
Something like an accountant or something.
But that's a home occupation now. Home businesses is a whole nother category that you can change. And, you know, chances are, I don't know of many businesses other than farming and used to, that you can really do off of a, a property, you know, without building an industrial building, which then you need extra power for equipment. There's a whole bunch of other regulations that go along with it, noise, odors, all that stuff.
I think we've all encountered a lot of home businesses, whether it's a beauty parlor or it could be a framing shop or some sort of service business where it's a retail store in essence, but a low-traffic retail store. And do we want those to go on and do we want to enable them? For the most part, I'd like to enable those relatively low-impact businesses and, and make it as easy as possible to set that business up. We're trying to, to help be a business incubator as a community. Make it more affordable for people to start a business and grow it into a commercial enterprise. Hopefully, they stay in town.
Yeah, but, but Rich, when you start talking 20 trips a day and four to six employees and, you know, larger vehicles, they're past, in my opinion, they're past that point of home.
I, I think we're all in agreement with you. You just, you just are making a point that you made it, and I think everybody here, I, correct me if I'm wrong. It all sunk in with all of you that, yeah, probably 10, 10 trips a day and four employees. And I took that a step further in saying, well, do we want to incorporate some of this into, if we have very specific limits that a zoning code enforcement agent could enforce, do we even need to hold a public hearing? I just, we don't have a huge number of public hearings for home businesses. So if it's one or two a year, I'm not trying to take work out of our hands because we're overworked. But how do we make it simple for people to have that business and still protect the budding public? And so, could it be that we put a limit on the number of employees and the number of trips per day and throw it all into the, the moderate impact category and eliminate public hearings? Or is there some reason that we might want to be able to have a public hearing for certain kinds of people that are applying?
And one thing I.
Question to answer, you know, because if we can eliminate public hearings for some potential applicants and not hurt anybody, I think we're doing a better job.
I would recommend only doing that if you have a built-in safety net of, of ample space between the business and the others.
Rich?
I think, I think at this.
Hold on, Rich was talking.
This is a relatively new phenomenon that we're trying to, trying to think about for the future. I would suggest that we have public hearings. But if, over a period of time, one or two years, there are insignificant applications, then we can change things and say, there's no public hearing involved. But until we know exactly what's going to happen, I think public hearings are an important part of the process.
Rich, you were trying to.
That's a good point.
One thing too about saying vehicles going down, you can get neighbors starting to count, and next you know, you're getting lots of complaints. And where, where does it show up? You know, if you have three kids or four kids and they have friends, is that traffic going to start getting counted? Are you guys going to have to start investigating all that stuff? So, you know, limiting the number of parking spaces and that, I think, would be able to control a lot of that. And most people aren't looking to start a big business in their house. Most people innovate from their house and they grow out of their house and off their property. That's more often the case, you know, for a business.
One of the things that, I'm sorry.
I'm, I'm just wary, you know, if you get some disputes going amongst neighbors and they start pointing fingers, well, how come they have vehicles going in and out and they sit there with a clicker and they count the kids going back and forth and say, hey, I had 35 trips going in and out of that house one day. You know what I mean? It could open up a can of worms.
So what's the thought? Any ideas where we go with this? I mean, I'm, I'm okay with, I was, I'm trying to always figure a way to eliminate a public hearing if we can, but maybe we leave it, if it's one or two a year, it's, maybe it's not a big deal. But the idea here is a, a limit on the number of trips per day, the number of employees, probably total square footage, just like the other two categories. And obviously, the 49% of the total living area should be in every single
Yep.
category. But I think the big thing about public hearings is we want to talk about screening and have to be able to weigh in.
Right.
In a way that keeps, that maybe those 300-foot driveways are not acceptable if they're parallel with each other and not, one of the driveways is traipsing right by somebody's house. You know, and could, do we need to put that into, to specifically define?
I don't, I don't think you have to be that specific. I was just trying to show a point of how it could change depending on, you know, the, you know, the, the home and the location. But I think Bob's idea, and, and yours too, is, you know, I think we should kind of leave it with the public hearing at least for a year or two and see how this new, new economy of ours is going to wash out.
But why don't we put 10 trips?
I mean, the thing with the public hearing is if, if, the thing with the public hearing is if somebody has a 300-foot driveway and they object, they're there at the public hearing and they're objecting, so we can hear that.
Let me, let me suggest a specific course of action here, and then let's, let's analyze this. So let me propose putting in 10 trips a day for employees. Keep it at the same square, the square footage as the, the previous category. So we're really capping this out at four employees for a home business and 750 square feet for a home business. But we're going to go 10 trips a day for employees and
special.
And a special permit and then buffering. But what more can they do on this versus a moderate impact use other than have up to 10 trips a day that we don't limit on the, the lesser ones? I mean, what more can you do here that you couldn't already do under moderate? I mean, yeah, under moderate.
I've been a proponent of having the number of trips as key for the minor and the moderate. And I think of a lot of our properties around the lake and in other parts of town that were developed a long time ago, the houses are right next to each other. And if you've got a lot of traffic in and out, the neighbors are going to start feeling like they live in a commercial district.
Yep.
We had one woman who is a large therapist, who is not preceded, but she, she has a practice in, not in town, but she lives in town. And she was thinking about bringing her practice into a home occupation. And she has several visitors a day. Her house is a rear lot, but it's still, it's a tiny lot, it's around the lake, it's a tiny lot. And her driveway goes within 20 feet of the two abutting houses, not the property, the houses. I mean, it's right, I would object if I lived in one of those two houses with all the traffic going back and forth.
That's my point.
So, so give me a solution here. What would the solution be? Try and put this into words that we could put on paper.
So the solution's a public hearing. And if the abutting property owners come and shop. So the solution's a public hearing and if the abutting property owners come and show up and object, then we have to reject it.
So how is?
We need to, we need to limit the number of trips for the minor and the moderate.
Yep.
And or have separation from the properties.
I don't know how you do.
Paula, can you, Paula, can you develop a table that would show this? Because then you can see the comparison between one and another very easily.
I can, yeah.
And then, and then it's the same criteria for each one. It's just a different number. Different employees, different trips, different size of vehicles, different square footage. Different buffer, whatever it's going to be.
I agree, but there was no, in commission members discussion in prior meetings, not necessarily the last one, but the ones before that. They were saying they did not want any minimum lot size and you didn't want any separation. Which is why that's not in this.
Well, then don't put those in, but at least have a table for the number of employees, the number of cars, the number of parking spaces, the size of the vehicles. The square footage of the office space, you know, those types of things. So at least then it's parallel construction through each of the ones.
Let's go back to where we came from in the first two categories. Are we now proposing? A trip limit on each of those? We're trying to keep these regulations more simple. By limiting the number of vehicles and the parking. And you know, I think of the, the lake watershed, the nutrient allocation table. By keeping it relatively simple, it became enforceable and universally embraced. And if, I, I just want to have more simple regulations here. And I, I think we're getting into a lot more detail than we need to.
But Rick, Rick as an example. But Rick, if I'm in a minor, minor occupation, I only have two employees, but I could have fifty trips a day. Because nothing limits, limits me from that.
Good point. Good point.
And you could, I mean, you just could, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, I could run a UPS, I could run a UPS center out of my house. And the truck comes in and picks up packages and sends them out. You know, I'm a third person, I'm a third party. Person distributing whatever I'm distributing.
A good point. I didn't think of that. All right. So what do we put in for number of trips for the first two categories? You know, I look at ten trips as a lot of trips in a day. That's, you know, once an hour a vehicle.
Right.
Was that ten? You're talking ten trips a day?
I, yeah, I see that as a bare, bare minimum if you're operating a business. I mean. If I decide to go to the post office, go get some sandwiches for the crew. And then we get a UPS delivery and then we have to go out to see a client and then.
Yeah, but Rick, if you've got a small, small home occupation, you get more than ten trips. Again, my feeling is you're getting into where you should have an office.
No, but, but I'm saying. Ten trips for the, the first two levels, I think is a reasonable number. I think if, if we're going to have an expanded employee footprint on the, on the, with more restrictions potentially. Being able to be imposed because of screening and the requirement of a larger lot, then put in twenty trips a day. And, and four employees under, under the major home impact.
When you're saying twenty vehicles, you mean, that's forty trips.
I think twenty trips a day becomes a commercial venture.
I do too.
But I'm just making sure that when you're saying twenty trips for twenty vehicles.
How do we split this out so that we have here?
Because you only got twenty trips in and out.
Give me a number then. How do you, how do you want to segment this? Where do we start?
I don't see how you.
Four, six, ten. Four, six, ten. Four, six, ten for vehicle trips. Four for minor.
Six, ten.
Ten for major.
You guys, there's no, four trips? I can run down to the hardware store. There's one trip right there in the morning. I could run to the post office. There's another trip. I could go get.
It's important to say visitors. Because the owners, I think, I think it's visitors. Customers, visitors.
Hold on a second. Rich had the floor. Just finish up, Rich.
Well, you know, you guys are just using examples, you know, you could run, you gotta run down to the post office. That could be business orientated. UPS drops off once a day and if you have pickup, you can schedule a pickup. So there's two trips. That's if you're doing a, an eBay business or something, you know. People will ship that. They usually come in once and pick everything up at the end of the day. But, you know, ten trips sounds like a lot, but that can add up pretty quick. You get, you know, two different, you know, FedEx may show up, UPS may show up. You know, one of your suppliers may show up with a small delivery and a customer may show up, you know, and they could be in their car. And then, you know, how do you separate your kids and family members and your daily trips in and out?
But we're not talking, but we're not talking about the, we're not talking about the home.
Talking about family, we're talking about outside people. And I got to tell you, where we live, if we had more than ten or twelve trips in and out. It would be disturbing on a daily basis. If we had ten and twelve in and out by other than family members. It would be a pain in the butt.
Right. Again, the thing we have.
Between business and.
The thing we have.
Discriminate between business and, and, and personal. You know, like if you got, if you got, again, if you got teenage kids, you got a whole bunch, they have a whole bunch of trips.
That's different.
But that's, that's expected, that's expected in a residential area. We're talking about a residential area here. Home, homes, houses, people. Kids going in and out in cars, that's to be expected. UPS delivery trucks and other goods coming in, shipped in and shipped out, that's not expected in a home, in a home district.
It is now.
It is now.
But how much now, you know? How much now?
I usually. It's we delivers. Are we trying to discriminate between?
Rick, you've got to protect the value.
Hold on, what, just let.
You've got to protect the value of the homes, Rick.
Larry, what was I saying?
The value of the, the real estate value, you've got to protect that.
My, I, I, I'm just raising a point here. Are we trying to, should we discriminate between? Conventional automobile trips versus commercial trucks, vehicles, trips? Because if you get into automobile, you gotta, you gotta have a problem if you got. If you have a lot of family members in, within your family, you can have, you can rack up a bunch of trips just normally.
Bob, what you, what were you going to say? I'm sorry, I cut you off before.
I was saying that the, the, the whole, the basis of this whole thing is residential, home, uh, home. We've got to protect the values of the homes. By, by melding it with commercial real estate or commercial operations, you could be jeopardizing the value of the house. If my, if my neighbor has twenty trucks coming in and out every day, the value of my house is going to go down.
Then, then let me, let me throw this out for an analysis and I haven't thought this through. What if we have two categories here? We have minor. And. And that is limited to six trips a day. And we have. Major, which is, requires a special permit and has everything that we currently have in moderate, but rolled into major. And it's a special permit and we can go sixteen trips a day and four employees. And then it's, you either pull a permit or you have it, you pull a permit for a minor business. Or you have to have a, a, a public hearing. Because I, that, that, it seems like that there's really no. It's either one place, either we want the control or we don't need it at all. And then it becomes really clear. You can either, you can do this or you have to have a, a public hearing. I just don't see where there's that much difference between the currently proposed moderate and the major impact. Except that you need to screen. There's not much more you can do on the major. And, but you have to screen it more effectively on a bigger lot, but what more can you do?
Yeah, that's all.
So i- if that's the case, why do we have moderate or why do we have major? You know, maybe we want that kind of control. If you get past the small home office with limited trips. And it's really a mom and pop enterprise. If that's okay to use. I, I hope I'm not violating anybody's sensibilities. But it's a small mom and pop enterprise and it's a. Not a lot of trips and it's just a, you're operating your business out of your house, accountant, tailor, whatever it might be. And then the red, everything else needs a public hearing. We just don't get that many applications in the course of a year. And if we could ram them into those two categories, that might be the answer. I do, I do agree with Paula that there are times when we absolutely want to have control over this application.
Oh, absolutely. I totally agree.
Effective, you know, input on, on buffers and setbacks.
But the original. Direction that. I was trying to go in, which this was a year ago, probably at this point. So it's. This is from memory. The minor, the intention with the minor was an occasional visitor, an occasional client.
Right.
Period.
Right.
Then the moderate. Was more, more employee, maybe at that point you have some employees that you then have additional trips. And the major is. Where you have maybe more employees or, or at least. A business that has more activity so that the neighbors feel it more. Or could potentially feel it more. So the commission could then put some boundaries on it or not. You know, requires setbacks and, and things like that. So that was the original intent with it. And it, I don't remember if it was the last meeting or two meetings before that. When the commission felt that everything that was in the minor and the. Could also include customers coming and, and with business and professionals. So that's. So we sort of. I don't know whether we need. One or, one or two. Categories at this point. I sort of liked the small need to enlarge. From before, from our original drafts that we were working with. Where it was a visitor and. Very few visitors, clients or customers, you know, a couple a day maybe.
Can we focus on where we're probably in agreement? And I'm going to go back to something you said, Bob. The. Discernible differences from each of the three categories. If we stick with three categories is very logical. It's like, you can do this here, this here, and then this over here. And. I think we veered away from that a little bit because we're all scattered right now. You know, we keep going back and revisiting, or at least I have been doing it. I don't mean to. I'm revisiting the minor. Minor, moderate. I do think that this, I, I think it's easier to express what I would like to see limits in the minor area is the number of visits per week. You know, I think of a law office that doesn't need to have a lot of people visit the law office. They're not going to do closings there. The public is probably not going to come in from the public, but things are going to be dropped off. Ten visits a week, twelve, fifteen, something like that, but a very moderate number in the course of a week period. In the course of it, I don't know that we can enforce that. That, that's the other thing. We get into moderate impact, we, we wanted to let. Contractors and things that keep their vehicles at home have them there. Well, maybe all of those bigger vehicles have to be bumped into the major and, and there is. You know, we may be able to eliminate one of these two categories, but I, I don't think we can give up public hearings. When it comes to the need for them to protect neighbors with screening and setbacks. That to me seems like it's a given right now. And I, and I also want to have it really simple and inexpensive for somebody to just. You know, register their home business and do business out of their house with, with limited trips. I don't, you know, maybe the middle ground is where we don't need it. But I, I just hate making people have public hearings for almost. You know, I, I don't have a feel for how many applications we've had in the last three years, but Paula, you had given us some information.
It was, I think it was only two in the last, in the last two years. We've had quite a few prior to that. But it's.
I, I, I know of, I know of. I know of instances that people have home offices and I'm sure they don't have permits for them.
You know what's striking?
Home occupancy, you know?
What's striking me, guys, is when we bring this to a public hearing. And they have that, that moderate impact, it's going to be two commercial vehicles, not to exceed eleven thousand pounds and one fourteen thousand pounds. I think that's going to raise some heck with some people in the public when they come to, go to the public hearing. And that's why I'm getting back, I think we need that, a special permit to do that type of stuff. I just do. Because I just keep thinking, if you live next to this situation and you've got. Two commercial vehicles and you've got another one for fourteen thousand pounds and you've got ten or whatever, twenty visits a day and I'm living next to them. I'm not going to be a happy camper.
I disagree with you.
And I think when it goes, if, if people who are aware, when we have this public hearing, which I, I'm telling you, they would die. If, if they have a situation where they've had an experience before or think there's a potential to have experience with a neighbor, they're going to be screaming. My opinion. I know I would be.
Well, you know what? I think we need to think through this in a lot more depth. We're, we're so scattered on this right now as a group. And in terms of what we want, I mean, it seemed clear at first. Make it simple for the small business with almost no public interaction.
I don't think it is simple though, Rick. I just don't think it is, not to interrupt you, which I know I'm doing. But when you're talking a residential area as opposed to a commercial area. It's not simple. It's like health insurance. It's not easy. It's just not, you know. I have a great deal of difficulty with anything except the, the minor in a residential area, just philosophically. I, I, I don't mind the guy who's the carpenter who has his, you know, van with his tools in it. But boy, I'll tell you, I, I just have. Real mixed feelings on whether, where, where we should go in a residential area.
So why does?
Yeah, the carpenter, the carpenter that, the carpenter that runs out of his house and has his van with a sign on the side and maybe a trailer is one thing. But then all of a sudden he's got another van and another pickup truck.
Yep, yep.
Then it's a, that's a commercial venture.
Yep, and then he's.
Get an office, get a parking lot.
Then he's going, then he's going to employ these parking there. If they've got a long driveway, it's one thing. He's got a short driveway, they're parking on the street and, you know, it just, I don't know. It's a commercial enterprise.
I mean. Though that sole practitioner that maybe has, maybe the, the minor, we want to go down to one employee. And as soon as you get to two employees, you need to be in a commercial area. I don't know. I, I know.
I know we've been talking about that and two employees. What I would like to see is one out, one employee, not. Not a resident of the house. In other words, if a husband and wife had a business, they had one employee. I, I, I would say that would be, that would be my limit. If I had my brothers.
Yes, Rich. Are you, just waiting.
Wait, yeah, I'm waiting. I want to get your attention. So. What I'm gathering here is you got to discern also from. Their plumber or the electrician who has a fourteen thousand pound vehicle. Overnight parking would be an issue. So if they're starting to park three and four vehicle, commercial vehicles overnight. That gets to be a whole nother issue. You can limit, that means they're getting bigger. They should be working out of a. More of a commercial area. Because they're, you know, like, like Bob even said, you have some, the guy, the plumber or some, he may have a small box truck. He'll pull out in the morning, come back at the end of the day and he's done. He starts seeing two or three box trucks in there. Now he's running the enterprise in there. So now maybe what you do is you address this. To slow it down by overnight parking. So if they can't park more than one or two commercial vehicles, maybe. And a trailer, now they have to start searching out to get into a commercial or industrial work area like most people do. That's one way of curbing some of that.
And that, that's built in, Rich, in this, in the current draft of minor and moderate.
Overnight parking?
Overnight parking, yes.
So, you know, you don't have to worry about those, you know, I, I, you know, I heard somebody mentioned. You know, next, you know, he has three or four box trucks, they're leaving their cars and they're going out, you know?
Yeah, I mean.
That, but that's, if that's covered, then you don't have to worry about that. They can't park them there overnight. That many vehicles.
So what is the consensus for minor home occupation in terms of limiting visits per week?
For a week or per day? What are we talking?
Either one. I mean. Is that something that we should be doing?
Yes, I think we should. It's not easy. I, I would not want more than four, five, four or five visits a day. Somebody who's an attorney or an accountant, I just wouldn't.
What about somebody who gives?
I think, huh?
What about somebody who gives music lessons or does other things? They could have four or five people a day regularly until nine, ten o'clock at night.
Yeah, they don't, that music, well, you'd think to be more than five. Well, I would limit to five, period.
My, my wife went to music lessons and was at someone's house and. She would go seven, eight o'clock at night, you know, and there'd be another kid leaving.
Yeah, well, so I, I still don't see why we can't, we can't limit it to five. That's, that's our prerogative. I mean, again, again, Rich, I go back, if you live next to them. Do you want people in and out from eight o'clock in the morning till ten o'clock at night? No, is my answer.
Should hours of operation for visits be in, in here?
You could, you could do nine, but you know, like Rich's point on the music lesson, I know kids take music lessons at night.
At night, yeah.
I just don't want ten a day. They might, music lessons might be from three o'clock until nine o'clock because the kid's getting out of school. You know, I mean, it might be a whole different occupation. In terms of their, their schedule. My kids took piano lessons at five o'clock in the afternoon. I mean, I know how that goes. I had one at four and one at five. I mean, that's how I worked it. But, but I understand your point, Rich, with that. Again, I, I just, and, and, and I think we all, I think we all feel this way that, and Bob has said it too. It, it, these, these things create a devaluation of property when you, when you really go from. A business to a commercial operation. You, you guys are seeing my conservative side, sorry.
Little one?
Literally.
Well, you know. The thing that makes me most nervous is the person that wants to put an industry in their barn. And creates a whole different work area. That's what concerns me of anything. Because I'm, innovation starts in the home, it grows and the natural progression is. You grow out of your property and you move into an industrial space or a commercial space. Our issue is where do we, where do we draw that line so that people do that?
Rich, let's focus on what you're saying right now because I think that's the most important question. That we haven't discussed enough, enough depth to answer as a group. If we can answer that, I think everything else will more easily fall into place. And what you just said, I can't, can't support that more strongly. So we've got the, the, so, you know, one employee, limited number of trips per day, pull a permit. Then I, let's go back to the three levels. There's, because the three levels of approval is what we're talking about. Zoning agent, site plan, special permit. What's the reason to have all those three levels? Let's take the numbers away. Let's take what we proposed at this point away. Let's, maybe we want to start from the top down. What do we need a special permit for? Then how do we pair that back and say, okay, the lesser of this is what we just need a site plan. Then we pair that back and go to what do we, what can we give staff permission to approve that we don't have to get involved in? And that might be a more effective way to get there, and I don't think we're gonna do it tonight. And maybe if we could, we move on from, I had hoped to close the public hearing, but there's no way we can tonight. We just have more to talk about because I, I suspect that if we restructure this around the top down. That we might be able to get to a consensus and an effective approach more efficiently. What, what does everyone think of that?
And can we do, can we break it down just a little bit into a couple other categories? Industrial type work. Professional type work, which could, you know, home occupation, which is a single person doing something. That's generally what home occupations are. Somebody works from home, somebody, you know, does maybe a craft or something. You know, kind of break them into some categories because the home occupation doesn't, done within the confines of your houses. Use, there's no impact generally on the outside other than somebody coming in and parking. So that doesn't hurt property value. What I think hurts property values is when somebody sets up a building or they have. You know, production facility that's done out there that makes noise, creates dirt, creates, you know, more.
The dirt, the noise is absolutely verboten in a residential zone. I think my concern has more to do with larger trucks and lots of trips. I think, are we all in agreement in that?
Oh, yeah.
And, and a lack of screening to neighbors. You know, if I'm a neighbor and I look at fairly good sized commercial trucks making twelve or fifteen trips a day, twenty trips a day. Rumbling down a long driveway, I don't want to see that if I'm a neighbor.
Well, now you, if you get, if you get industrial trucks doing that, you're doing something pretty big. So that.
Agreed. So, so I think if we focus on what we don't want to see. And we don't want to see a large industrial enterprise operated in a residential zone. We don't want to even see a large commercial enterprise or a large professional enterprise. We want them to go operate in a business environment. So these are home occupations or home businesses. But let's meld the two terms for a little bit. How much is okay to operate out of the house? How about a landscaping business where the landscaper has. A pile of materials in the front yard or the side yard and three big trucks and they rumble out in the morning and they come back. Twice a day to pick up materials. Is that okay in a residential zone?
No. The regulations say that you can't put your materials, stack them in the front yard. So I think that's very well covered. Uh, Rick, I think originally at a point where is, um, major impact. The home occupancy was really a commercial venture and shouldn't, shouldn't be there. That was my interpretation of what he says and I kind of agree with him.
Are we all in agreement with that concept? I mean, so if, if we could stop, start at the top down, say what is permissible by special permit? And then subtract from that and say, okay, what do we just need a site plan for? Because these are the kinds of approaches we don't need. That might be it. Because I think if we set an absolute limit on what we want, are gonna allow in a residence, in a residential zone. At least we know we're not going to go past that as we pare it down to the bottom. You see what I mean?
Yeah.
It might be, that might be a more efficient way to get to this understanding of what the three or two levels might be. I, I suspect we're gonna end up at three levels because again, special permit. Site plan approval, staff approval, three levels of approval. And that's why, that's what generated these categories. So. You know, we, we could even rename them s- special permit need. Site plan approval need and, and staff approval need. It's the same difference. I'm gonna suggest. We, we could focus on that. I, I'm, I'm, my mind is worrying right now, but I, I need time to sort this back out because. I'm rethinking everything we did. I'm trying to think of what I don't ever want to see in a residential zone.
I think we're doing very well, actually. The discussion is good. I mean, I think we all want to have. The people of town happy with what we finish up with.
Yeah, and I don't think we disagree about everything. We just.
That's my big concern.
I like Bob's idea of, of tabulating what the differences are amongst the, amongst the three. So we got, you get to see what are the, what are the, the things we're trying to control and what, what's the pressure point where we say, gee, we, we don't want to allow that.
And Larry, it's also easy, easy for people, the public to come in and take a look at it and it's clearer.
Yeah. Then you, you look at one sheet and you can kind of, you get the sense of the whole thing. Look back and forth.
Yeah, I agree.
Paul, if you could stand up and on your whiteboard, make a, make a chart for us tonight.
Yeah, I will, I will, I will, I will. I'll drop in the sand on the beach.
Yeah, get the hell back from Maine. Not for that Maine, so.
I think we really need to look a little bit closer at the type of business they want to put in. Because, you know, we'll go back to the music teacher. Mom drops the kid off, that's, and leaves, that's one trip, comes back to pick the kid up. That's two trips now. And that's, you know, right there, you know, that's if you count in and out as one trip. So they have three kids, you got three kids in a day, that's already well over the limit.
Teachers have ten or twelve students in a day, every half hour.
There's a difference.
Minor or is that moderate maybe?
That's why I say you gotta look. I think we gotta look a little bit at the type of business that's going on.
Yeah.
And dictate the traffic.
Okay.
But the music. Yeah, the music teacher is one thing, but that's a private car, a commercial vehicle, twenty trips of commercial. You could have twenty, twenty trucks a day. That's a different kettle of fish.
I can have fifteen pickup trucks come in in my business. That's a, that's a standard truck, F one fifties. You know, the type of business is gonna have to dictate the traffic. That's the only way you can do it legitimately.
And I think you made a good point, Rich. That's what we have to figure out what we will allow.
Yeah, so type of business can dictate.
Yeah.
And I, I think a lot of the things that a couple of weeks ago got moved into what are, what should be minor. Occupations, I think needs to be teased out and, and moved down to moderate.
I agree.
Bigger trucks and, yeah.
Yep.
Think the minor should be just, nobody even knows it's there. There's trips back and forth, but it's, yeah.
And, and no vehicles.
Yeah, the attorney or their accountant or even the music teacher, you wouldn't even probably, no.
Control by the number of parking spaces. So kind of, kind of where I'm heading is I, I think that. Well, in the case of the music teacher, if you just, you know, if you have, you can have quite a number of trips, but it's, it's just an, it's a, it's a family vehicle, a car.
Right, right.
And it's only one at a time. So that's different from, so you might have a lot of trips. But the, but the thing that you don't want is, is the vehicles and multiple of those being on the, onsite at the same time.
Yeah, because it, and, and, and we can even limit the, the number of days and hours that they can do that. I mean, can't we?
In a minor, you would have to do that in the, in the language of the regulation.
I'm not really worried about the music teacher or the attorney or the accountant or, you know. Those are not going to be high impact travel. In my opinion. Because when they start trucking the larger vehicles and then it gets different. Okay, I'm done.
Yeah, we beat this to death now.
Yeah, we have, Larry. We've, we've beaten it to death.
We were in great shape until we got into the major impact and then everything.
Yeah, we were, I thought we were rolling along pretty good here.
Yeah, but you know what happens? It all, it, it goes back to the whole premise, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
You know, in, in order to accommodate the needs of a, a contractor who wants to park his truck at his house.
Yeah.
We, we started to include some of the contractor type of vehicles in. In the.
Minor.
In the minor and.
Yeah, not, not gonna work.
On it. Maybe it's passenger cars and solo practitioners are, are minor.
Yeah.
And maybe once you start to park any commercial vehicle, that is bumped up into moderate and we have a fairly wide range there. And if you want a, a heavy commercial vehicle, you need a special permit and we need setbacks.
Well, not at all.
You're gonna have an awful lot of permits being gotten. There's a lot of contractors that park their vehicles in their driveway. And all they run is a home office.
Well, that would, that would be a, a, a site plan approval. It could be a short, sweet approval process. With publication afterwards. Unfortunately, it costs them money and I'm, I'm always trying to save people money if we can. Push it into a lower cost way of permitting it. I, you know, I just, I hate it when the money goes to the state of Connecticut.
Yeah, but you know, but you know, Rick, it, it's, it's a necessary evil in this, in this case, in my opinion.
One of the things that we could, one of the things we, if we did decide to keep the commercial. The contractor vehicles in the minor, we could require, just flat out require screening.
Yeah.
So that the neighbors don't see it. And it's, if there isn't sufficient room between the two to, to screen it, then they wouldn't be able to do that business there.
Right. I think of a, some person who's a carpenter or a plumber. With one, one vehicle on a half acre lot, no ability to screen it. And he's, he wants to just get in his truck and leave for the day and go work.
But that's different.
And those, those people probably are never gonna show up for a permit either.
No, they're not.
How do we, let me ask you a question. So I'm a realtor. I work eighty percent of my time out of my bonus room over in my garage, but I have an office in Mansfield I go to when I need to print stuff. Should I register as a home business? I never meet with clients here. I have a home office.
That's the point. That's the point. You're running a. Rick, I, I, I do architecture out of my house. I don't meet clients here, but I do architecture out of my house. Is that a home business?
I don't think you should need to register.
I don't.
Your business is wherever it's registered. You've got a business mailing address.
I'm, I'm a legitimate business. I'm an LLC.
Located and it's located at your house?
I think that the, the key is, is. When somebody other than the property owner or whoever resides there is, is coming in to do the work or coming in to. To review work or to, to meet with the, with the, the professional. To me, that's, that's when it needs a home occupation application. But when it's Rick doing his work at home, Bob doing his work at home, I'm doing my work at home. I've, I'm not registered as a home occupation. Well, or Maine, I'm not, but in Maine or in Wyndham, I'm not, I'm not registered. I've had a business there since nineteen eighty-five.
So if that. So Paula, if that's the definition, then we should focus on numbers of, number of employees, numbers of vehicle trips. Numbers of visitors, that type of thing. Because those are going to be the things that are most objectionable to the neighbors.
Yeah, that's my opinion, yes.
Me too. I agree.
What happens inside the bill, building, I don't care.
Doesn't matter.
Right.
A lot of people are gonna be working from home, uh, some, in some cases permanently since the, since COVID. So. They don't have to have employees on site. So you have a lot of people that are technically go to home business. But they're actually employed, they're employed, the place of business is someplace else.
Yep, yep.
Okay.
I just heard Ernie say motion to, uh.
EJ, EJ's retired.
What do you say? We done this enough for the evening?
Yeah, I've had enough.
You've had enough fun for one day.
It's been a lot of fun.
This was good though, guys. This was good.
It was very productive. And who is the one who said we need to focus on employees? Vehicle trips and numbers of vehicles. Was that you, Rich?
Uh, between me and Bob.
Yeah.
Okay. I think that's the best place to start back in the minor. And that, I think we're gonna focus on a, a, a realistic number for each of those, probably one employee. And then you need to get a permit. And we might even want to say, um, businesses that don't need, need a permit. Are where sole practitioners are operating without employees and without public visits.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep, I agree. Good point.
You know, that's, that's in the spirit of what I've been trying to do. How do we? Just go as far as we need to with regulation. I mean, I'm sounding conservative too. Rich, are you proud of me?
How are you voting? Are you voting?
Vote for the most honest politician.
Someone who pays taxes. Sorry. I'll behave, I'll behave.
Nah, we don't want to get into that battle.
I didn't go there. Okay, why don't we, why don't we continue this? We're gonna have to continue the public hearing, Paula, but. I think focusing on no regulation, very minor regulation, I think we're focusing on something. Uh, I can talk with you offline, Paula. Um, I don't know where we're gonna come in the moderate. But I think the moderate might be a, a place where we could have some, some commercial vehicles, but a requirement for screening.
Screening.
But it could be staff approval and then, and then, uh. Well, staff approval would be the, the very minor, the sole.
The very minor, yep.
One, one employee. And then we have a site plan with, um, with screening for, um, moderate. And we can come up with the numbers. I think we'll probably end up all agreeing on what the numbers should be. And then really what's the need in a major impact that we can't do in moderate? And what's the flexibility? You know, I don't, I think we, we've all generated this perspective that if you have a commercial grade enterprise, you need to be in a commercial area.
That's right.
Maybe there isn't a major.
It may be.
That's why they're zoning, isn't it? To differentiate between residential and commercial. That's why there's zoning regulations.
That's why we have it, absolutely.
Okay, one thing for, one thing for major, power to your property is, is a big key to run a lot of major stuff and there's. Not a lot of three phase pro, uh, power going to the side roads for building those big.
I've been in home machine shops with three phase power many, many times.
I know, but you look around.
That's how they follow a lot of the, the marijuana farms is that they, they discovered that they had some homes that were, were using an inordinate amount of power. Because they had all these grow lights down.
That's right.
Okay, I'm gonna make a motion. Paul, what would next regular meeting be?
Uh, two weeks from tonight.
That is the, uh, 12th?
The 13th. Is it a Monday or a Tuesday?
Okay.
When's the holiday? When's the holiday?
Is it a Monday or a Tuesday?
It's a Tuesday.
Okay, so Tuesday is the 13th. So I'm going to make the motion that we continue this public, public hearing to, um, the, uh, Tuesday, October 13th at 7:00 PM.
Sounds good.
At, at, at the, um, or whatever we're, however we're going to meet. Uh, I go second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
I, I.
I.
Okay. So that being said, pass on anything else that was on the agenda this evening unless there's something.
Can I just interrupt? There's actually two other items that are part of this public hearing that. I don't, I think we're all set with, but I. I say that hesitantly because. A month ago, I thought we were kind of all set on the home occupations, so. But if, if you could take another look at the parking and loading and the performance standards.
Okay.
So that maybe we, we can, uh, when we're ready to put one to bed, they all will fall into place.
Okay. All right. Uh, any open discussion items? Vera, any enforcement actions? No, I guess not.
Not with us tonight.
Um, an audience of citizens, nothing? I'll make a motion, will you adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Yeah, I like the hand thing. That's nice and quiet. Thank you. Hey Flo, thank you. Paula, thank you.
Thank you. Flo, you can stop recording.
I am.